All right, it's 6:30 PM and we are live, so go ahead.
It's called meeting in order, I'd like to welcome everybody to the, I don't even know what today is anymore.
April 28th.
Is it? Gee, that's horrible. I'd like to welcome everybody to the April 28th City Council meeting. Uh, the first thing we'll do is say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, Christie, can we have a roll call, please?
Beerstead.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Werset.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Flunkett.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Okay, next we'll have the approval of the minutes for the March 24th regular meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second.
Um, we'll go through the, we'll, I'll just do a, I'll call everybody's name again, then you guys answer. Uh, Hal?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Todd?
Uh, wait, that was the...
For the minutes.
Oh, this is, this is for the minutes from the last meeting. Todd?
Aye.
I should've stayed on that one, Mayor, I wasn't clear for that meeting.
Scott?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And Sean?
Aye.
Okay, next we'll have, uh, public comments. Um, Mike, is there anybody there for public comments?
Yes, there is.
Okay, Evan, come on up.
Come on up. Say your name, man.
Hello, I am Terry Beckham, and I'm here with my husband Conrad. First, I'd like to say thank you to Alderman Gagne for, um, listening to our concerns ahead of time, and also Scott Simpson for helping us navigate getting to this meeting tonight. Thank you very much. Also, thank you to the City Council for allowing us to share our concerns. Just so you know, this isn't my thing, I'm not used to speaking publicly like this, and I'm a little uncomfortable. This is a very important thing for us, though. Uh, we have lived in our home at 505 Kennedy Street for four years. We have watched our College View Edition neighborhood grow and change throughout those years, and as a result, we feel like we have a pretty good sense of the concerns and needs of our neighborhood. We are here to share some of those concerns about the development of land across, uh, from the high school, on Cemetery Road and Sixth Street. We feel what we are about to share is more than just about us. We have talked to many neighbors who are also concerned, and we just know it makes a difference for our whole neighborhood. Our concerns center on these main topics: communication by the city, rental units versus homeownership, population density, land use, the integrity of the College View Edition, and mainly our traffic and safety concerns. So, for city communication to begin with, we were shocked when we saw the tree line in the field across the road from us being torn down one day. We knew the land had been sold, and it would eventually be developed, but for some reason we thought we might be in on that information as it went along, as it progressed. We saw the City Council minutes, as I did some research from the fall, that the building discussion for this project was posted in the local newspaper sometime in October, and with a very quick turnaround was discussed at a, at a meeting. We have a regular subscription to this newspaper, and we never saw this. We have spoken with other neighbors who have said the same thing. We feel that our neighborhood should have received some specific information about this development and about this hearing in particular on ti- ahead of time. Our question is, why wouldn't our city do this for any neighborhood that is going to be primarily affected by a major building project? Rental units versus homeownership. We understand and we know that River Falls needs housing, and more importantly, affordable housing. But does that necessarily mean that every building project needs to be a multi-unit project such as this? Doesn't a development with owners rather than renters create better stability for a neighborhood? And perhaps something like a senior living unit or single-family home development with some top renting townhomes would be a better use for this space, and in particular, a better match to our neighborhood, the College View Edition. One of our concerns is the population density that will be created. So, with that in mind, approximately 90 units are planned and potentially 180 vehicles. We are concerned with the added population density and the traffic that will be created. 90-plus units with low, the low estimate of three people per unit is an additional 270 people trying to use these local city streets. Getting onto Cemetery Road from Sixth Street is already a challenge at certain times of the day. Along with this added vehicle traffic, there could potentially be an overcrowding of pedestrian traffic on the paths and the walkways in the area, which really are a true treasure for us. These walking paths, and especially those through the university, university, excuse me, were never meant to sustain hundreds more people. The land use itself, and we don't know anything about this, but we knew it would be too good to be true if this land were to remain just a rural field. But secretly, we hoped the city and the school district would have joined together and looked at it as, it as a prime spot for a community center and perhaps some kind of a park. Yes, housing is important, but so is community space in a town of this size, something lacking here, other than the valuable green space and parks which we have and we do treasure. We would hope our city's leaders could see the value of this land and envision something better than a group of eight and 12-unit buildings. Also, in looking at the plans, it seems the green space park that the developers had mentioned would be included is now rain gardens and a pond. Is this land too valuable for a park for its own residents? And, because we live near down, that deer now down near that end of the road, we are also concerned about the light pollution that will be caused by a large development. Now, the integrity of our neighborhood, College View Edition. It was suggested to us that our neighborhood was always meant to grow. Well, we disagree with that. Our neighborhood always was and still is very much a geographical island surrounded by Main Street, a cemetery, and the university. Adding a multi-unit complex next to it and simply connecting it to our neighborhood isn't our idea of growing. And keep in mind, there is another multiplex, multi-unit complex going up on the other end of our neighborhood, at the old motel site. Our biggest concern, though, is the traffic and safety of our neighborhood, our children, um, and we, we watch that. We're right out down on the end of Kennedy Street, and we have seen the changes through the years. People coming through there, going too fast, more and more traffic. When all is said and done, though, we're not sure we can expect the city to change plans for the development itself, though we would still prefer that. But we do expect them to reconsider placing the entrance exit, the only one that we can see in the plans, from the complex, and it goes right onto Kennedy Street. As was said earlier, this could potentially be 270 more vehicles coming through our neighborhood. This is dangerous for all of us, and it will no doubt add traffic through our neighborhood that it really was never meant to, to see or even to handle. What makes this especially dangerous and concerning for us is, if we are looking at the plans correctly, there's only that one outlet, other than an emergency access on the east side of the development, I think going out to Cemetery Road. We don't think this is good planning, and something we are extremely concerned about is how it would affect our community. With an entry and exit coming directly onto, from the new development onto Kennedy Street, how many residents of that new development, going to Dick's or to QuickTrip, will choose to take the alternate route of Kennedy Street to avoid trying to get on busy Cemetery Road? There is already a lot of traffic coming through the east end of Kennedy Street, and it is often going too fast, as I said. We are worried that the situation will only get worse. And of course, other streets like Johnson, Oak, and Sycamore will also be affected. So, in closing, and hopefully in going forward, we want to make it clear that we do not consider ourselves professional blueprint readers, and perhaps we are missing something. We do wish this development was not just rentals, but had some homeownership, and was more fitting for our neighborhood, made up of mostly single-family homes, and therefore would provide stability for our neighborhood. We would ask the developers and city be thoughtful about such things as land use, population density, and light pollution. We ask the city to consider that we will have multiplex units on both ends of our neighborhood, and the increased traffic that goes with them. And finally, we ask the city to look very closely at our greatest concern, that we see us, that we see a one, one main entry and exit from the development onto Kennedy Street. We ask that the city look at this carefully, perhaps even con, con, contacting the city police and other homeowners in the neighborhood to ascertain what the consequences of this might be in added traffic and safety. In truth, we feel we already know. We've seen it. Finally, we also ask the city to improve the communication with the citizens who live in our neighborhood as this project goes forward. Thank you for your time and consideration of our thoughts on the development of Cemetery Road and Sixth Street. We do have names of other neighbors who are concerned and would, would have been here tonight, except for other reasons, um, some of them being the COVID. Um, and if you want those names, we could see that you give them. Thank you very much.
Thanks, now. Okay, Mike, is there anybody else?
Yeah, you're welcome. No, there's no one else here?
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, next we move on to the consent agenda. Uh, the first one is a resolution approving the 2020 fee schedule. Uh, the third one is a resolution referring Sterling Pond's second edition final plan, the plan commission for 30 days. Next one is a resolution referring Sterling Pond's cottage's final plan, the plan commission for 30 days. Does anyone want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull Consent Agenda Item Number Two, Resolution Approving 2020 Fee Schedule.
Okay, anything else, anybody else? Okay, I'll take a motion on the rest.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items Three and Four.
Second.
Okay? I'm sorry.
Diane, Diane will second.
Okay. Uh, so we got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Gagne here. Um, the only concerns that I have as far as the COVID-19 and the boards not meeting, um, is that we have to push these items out 30 days, um, and we have to pretty much prolong the building process. Obviously, we know what these projects are going to entail, um, we've seen them before, we've seen the builders before and the developers. Uh, it just kind of concerns me that we can't streamline this and have the Plan Commission meet and come back to us. Aside from that, I will be voting yes in favor of this, because I want to see forward progress, but I'd like to see something that we could streamline this pro, this type of a project a little bit quicker.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, uh, so we'll take a vote here, we'll start with Diane.
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye, sorry.
Scott?
Aye.
Scott?
I'm sorry, aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Hal?
Aye.
Okay, and Sean, you polled number two.
Uh, Resolution Approving 2020 Fee Schedule. I just had a quick question tonight, and, um, I noticed that they removed the damage deposit, um, meeting room from the library, um, so the deposit will no longer be applied. I'm just curious, why is that? Um, what if someone damages the carpet? I know it might not happen a lot, but shouldn't we have a, an element of security? And if not, is it just not happening, or have we changed how we've operated, uh, over a period of time now?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may...
Yeah, please, Diane.
Um, yes, I'm on the library board, and we discussed, uh, we've, we've been in the process of updating the, um, what the fee schedule for the library, and also the policies for using the downstairs room. And, um, that was seen as unnecessary, where we already get a payment for use of those spaces and know where those people are, if, um, if there should be some damage. So, it was, um, uh, it was seen as not necessary.
And we don't have a history of having any problems, um, in the sense over the last couple of years, then?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Diane. Uh, Mr. Mayor, approval for, uh, Resolution Approving the 2020 Fee Schedule.
Second.
Okay, got first and a second. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I had a question relating to the, uh, Glen Park shelters, and this is probably just my lack of background knowledge here, so I apologize. Um, but it looks like the new pavilion we're setting a rental fee, but the old Glen Park re, uh, shelter we're moving off of there, was the plan for that to remain there after the construction of the new building, or was that, uh, going to be removed from the park?
This is Mr. Watson. That Glen Park shelter, um, the old shelter is being, I believe, converted to, uh, space to house equipment for the park.
Maintenance equipment.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll vote on this. Start with Ben.
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Hal?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Okay. Next, move on to ordinances and resolutions. First, our notice is, uh, ordinance commend, uh, the 2019 agreement with TW Equities Development Agreement. Uh, this would defer payments for six months through September due to the COVID-19. So I will entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the, go ahead, Scott.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the, the resolution, um, uh, for TW Equities LLC Developers Agreement.
Second.
Okay, first and a second. Questions and comments on this?
I have one comment that I've already shared with staff, but I'd, I'd just like to make it publicly. Um, I have no problem with, with this, this happened before, uh, before, uh, I could have a conversation with anybody or, uh, provide feedback, but going forward, I think we're going to encounter more of these requests for deferral, and I think we're gonna, we're gonna need to step up and, and help, help those people who have borrowed revolving loan funds for the city or different situations like this. In the future, though, it would be my recommendation and my suggestion that we, instead of deferring principal and interest, we only defer the principal and ask them to pay the interest. Keeps everybody involved, you know, it's a give from the city, it's also a give from them. Um, I don't have a problem with doing the deferral, but I, I think, I think asking them to pay the interest is, is, is the first step. Uh, if they can't do that, then that's a case by case, but I think going forward, it might be a good, a good policy decision for us, so that's all I have.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, otherwise, at first and a second, and I will, we'll vote on this now. Start with Todd.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Hal?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Okay. Next, move on to ordinances and resolutions. First, our notice is, uh, ordinance commend, uh, the 2019 agreement with TW Equities Development Agreement. Uh, this would defer payments for six months through September due to the COVID-19. So I will entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the, go ahead, Scott.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the, the resolution, um, uh, for TW Equities LLC Developers Agreement.
Second.
Okay, first and a second. Questions and comments on this?
I have one comment that I've already shared with staff, but I'd, I'd just like to make it publicly. Um, I have no problem with, with this, this happened before, uh, before, uh, I could have a conversation with anybody or, uh, provide feedback, but going forward, I think we're going to encounter more of these requests for deferral, and I think we're gonna, we're gonna need to step up and, and help, help those people who have borrowed revolving loan funds for the city or different situations like this. In the future, though, it would be my recommendation and my suggestion that we, instead of deferring principal and interest, we only defer the principal and ask them to pay the interest. Keeps everybody involved, you know, it's a give from the city, it's also a give from them. Um, I don't have a problem with doing the deferral, but I, I think, I think asking them to pay the interest is, is, is the first step. Uh, if they can't do that, then that's a case by case, but I think going forward, it might be a good, a good policy decision for us, so that's all I have.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, otherwise, at first and a second, and I will, we'll vote on this now. Start with Todd.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Hal?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Okay. Next, move on to ordinances and resolutions. First, our notice is, uh, ordinance commend, uh, the 2019 agreement with TW Equities Development Agreement. Uh, this would defer payments for six months through September due to the COVID-19. So I will entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the, go ahead, Scott.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the, the resolution, um, uh, for TW Equities LLC Developers Agreement.
Second.
Okay, first and a second. Questions and comments on this?
I have one comment that I've already shared with staff, but I'd, I'd just like to make it publicly. Um, I have no problem with, with this, this happened before, uh, before, uh, I could have a conversation with anybody or, uh, provide feedback, but going forward, I think we're going to encounter more of these requests for deferral, and I think we're gonna, we're gonna need to step up and, and help, help those people who have borrowed revolving loan funds for the city or different situations like this. In the future, though, it would be my recommendation and my suggestion that we, instead of deferring principal and interest, we only defer the principal and ask them to pay the interest. Keeps everybody involved, you know, it's a give from the city, it's also a give from them. Um, I don't have a problem with doing the deferral, but I, I think, I think asking them to pay the interest is, is, is the first step. Uh, if they can't do that, then that's a case by case, but I think going forward, it might be a good, a good policy decision for us, so that's all I have.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, otherwise, at first and a second, and I will, we'll vote on this now. Start with Todd.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Hal?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Okay, next, move on to, um, the resolution ratifying the Chief of Police proclamation. Uh, this would ratify the proclamation of the Chief of Police dated April 13th and April 16th of this year, 2020.
Mr. Mayor, I move approves, approval of the resolution ratifying the Chief of Police's proclamations.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep?
Um, I just want to reiterate, kind of like what we talked about in the last, um, in the couple, uh, building projects that we had going to Plan Commission. Um, I think number eight on this list says, uh, all City River Falls Committees, Commissions, and Board meetings are suspended. Um, I would just like us to, uh, potentially take a relook at, uh, Plan Commission, or anything that has to do with livelihoods of essential businesses. Um, I think that's something that we would be in favor, I'd be in favor of moving forward a little bit quicker, um, and having a board meet virtually or something like that, but I'm in favor of this, that's all.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep?
Um, and just a reminder, too, I think we're all in new territory, so people may have some questions about what exactly it is the council is doing. Just so people are aware, even though we've declared a local emergency, there's been a national and a state emergency. The actions of people that the council has appointed to be able to act or intervene on their behalf are not unchecked. So this, in fact, is the, this is the opportunity at the next meeting, then, for the council to review the actions that they've authorized the Chief of Police, the City Administrator, and the Mayor to take on their behalf, um, on intervening periods. So sometimes we're, we're hearing, you know, how does, you know, how, how does this authority roll through, and how, what's the, what's the role of the legislature, um, legislative body in the democratic representative, uh, process? So this, this really is that opportunity, um, as we go through and have the, um, the need to declare orders or do local, um, local orders, then these things will come back to the council, and that, in fact, is what we're doing at this point. So, just wanted to clarify that there is a legislative check on any of the actions that you've asked us to do on your behalf, and then certainly feedback, like Councilmember Gagne's, will be considered as we move forward, um, including when we put together the, the recovery plan that we would expect the council would, would approve and provide framework for us. So, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
So, just to clarify that, that if I could, Scott, are, are you saying that if, if we wanted to move forward with Mr. Gagne's suggestion of finding an interim solution for the Plan Commission to keep this moving at a quicker pace, this would be the time to do it? Um, you could, I believe, and, and City Attorney is on, is available on, on these video, um, calls, too, but essentially, you could object to the, the order that specifies the length. Right now, I believe the Committees, Commissions, and Boards are allowed to be suspended through, um, their September meeting, according to the order. So, if the council objected to that, then I believe this is an opportunity where you could say, "We are not satisfied that, we won't, we won't agree to that length." Um, how that gets resolved, I think we're learning, and I would need to learn from the City Attorney how that, um, that is resolved, but essentially, if you, you didn't agree, then, um, you could force the hand, so to speak, of the Mayor, the Police Chief, and the City Administrator. I, I don't think the intent is to force the hand on that, I think the intent is to try to find it, uh, a one-off or an exception to this situation where we, we say, we're, we're happy with, with the Chief's directions and his, and his orders, but we'd like to, we'd like to allow staff to explore how, how they could, uh, put together a Plan Commission meeting to move that particular one forward, because it is a little time sensitive. No, I think, and I understand, I understand the feedback that I'm hearing from you and Councilmember Gagne, that, and in fact, staff and working with the Mayor as we go through these, um, planning stages, we're, we're talking about some of these meetings, and in fact, the library board has already met, um, in April, but, um, we're talking about some of these meetings as soon as July. Um, and the Plan Commission, actually, the 30-day ref, the referral to 30 days was actually impacted more by the fact that the council only met once this month, because we didn't refer it at, we didn't refer it on April 14th, and that would have, um, pushed it forward. So, um, we do need to work on the Plan Commission timing for these development agreements, um, and, but some of it's been impacted, so that everybody is aware, and I think you are, it's, it's been affected by the council, um, um, and I think this is actually somewhat of a rap, more rapid time than when we were under our normal schedule, um, depending on when this gets started and, and how the postings and stuff work for the notifications to Plan Commission, because Plan Commissions have been, typically, we don't have a lot of special Plan Commissions, um, so they're once a month, and sometimes that actually pushes things back, too. But I think what I'm hearing is, at least from two of the council members, there's an interest in, in making sure that the order itself is not unnecessarily delaying projects that have general support.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly it. Um, you know, we, we have, um, official studies, um, that were ordered by the council and city staff, and, um, for housing projects, and particularly Sterling Pond's has been a, a growing development, uh, pun intended, I guess. Uh, but the, the big thing there is making sure that we're just not getting in the way of these projects, especially when they have really five good months to get this, these projects underway, uh, and get people in there. Um, I mean, we, we have a housing need, we have, uh, builders that are, this is their livelihood, so I don't want to hold them up either, especially with all the jobs that come out of that.
Chris Gerhard here. I'd like to just reiterate that Scott, it's, it's the time for, you know, the council
the chair of the plan commission, so I would expect him to do that.
Right. It was just my concern, I guess, when I brought that up initially, is that we do, we are imposing a 30-day wait currently, so. And who knows how long we're going to be in this? And if some, if another developer comes forward here in the next few weeks, then they've got to wait till our next council meeting, then they got to wait 30 days. And, I mean, it really draws out a building season for these folks to get anything done in a timely manner, especially when they've got a lot of moving parts on their side, outside of the government sides.
True.
Checked on the 62.22 statute there. Is that still, after the planning committee approval or the 30-day wait period, have to come back to the common council for final approval?
Yes. So in the current scenario, that we're probably going to talk about here in the future or in the rest of this meeting, you know, these things are going to be referred, then we, there's a certain amount of time that the plan commission has to debate and provide a recommendation to the council. I think the, the plan, as I understand it, was that for, for these situations that we're going to talk about, the plan commission would need, and they would just basically come straight back to the council, and the council would act in lieu of the plan commission and either approve or not approve them.
Yeah, and recall, this is for Platts. So there, I mean, all their, all their development things are, have some different rules for them. So this was, this was for some Platts.
But Mr. Gagne's point is well taken. I think, you know, we don't, I agree with what he, what he's saying. I think we don't want to, we don't want to delay things if there's no reason to, and they're generally agreed upon already.
Okay, anything else for anybody? Okay, so we'll vote on this. This is, we're still on the resolution ratifying Chief of Police proclamation, and we will start with Al.
Aye.
Diane.
Aye.
Ben.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Sean. Sean? Sean's muted.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Okay, next move on to initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $3,085,000 for a police facility. And I think Sean is on here from Ellers to give us a little presentation on this. Are you on here, Sean?
Yes, Mayor. Am I coming through okay?
Yep, you look great.
Just real quick for the council, what I'll be speaking from, and I believe Sarah has this in control, and she'll take you through the different slides, is the pre-sale report. The mayor alluded to one of a couple of initial resolutions that are all tied together within the pre-sale report. And there's a couple of things that we're looking, as Sarah and I were working to put this together, we were looking for some feedback this evening from the council. So I appreciate everybody's patience in doing the meeting this way, and I think we can go through the material briefly and then, and be able to answer questions that you might have. Okay, I see Sarah now has the exhibit up, the first exhibit that I wanted to review with the council for the financing. And again, is that the mayor alluded to one of the initial resolutions. What we're proposing this evening is to put together four different purposes into a single general obligation corporate purpose bond issue in the amount of $6,250,000. And what you're seeing on exhibit one is the preliminary repayment schedule for the entire issue of $6,250,000. Components of the issue will be amortized over different periods, but the whole issue will have repayment over a 20-year period. What you see in the purple column is the projected principal and interest payments. And for the interest rate, we used recently received yields for a similarly rated issuer. River Falls has a very, very strong bond rating of AA2 right now. So we took a sale from last week, and we added a quarter of 1% to those interest rates received. So the purple column is the expected repayment of principal and interest for the entire issue. And then to the right of that, we have four subcolumns that represent the different purposes combined together that may make the entire issue. The first purpose is refinancing a short-term note that you did in 2019 for preliminary expenses related to the police station project. The second column are the remaining expenses related to the police station. The third column, and this was one, we were particularly looking for some thoughts and direction from the council, represents the financing of the fire truck. The fire truck in this has repaid over 20.
Losing your audio.
Amortization, that would be a, oh, sorry, my back? Yep? Okay. Right now, the fire truck was scheduled to be paid back over a 20-year term. And then finally, the city issued a state trust fund loan in, in 2002 of the Phase Two of the Sterling Ponds infrastructure. That issue, we believe we can save money by refinancing. The term of the refinancing will be the same term as the outstanding debt. So we're not proposing to extend it. It would be repaid over the same term as the current 2017 issue. Okay. With that, I was going to move on to exhibit two, but Mr. Mayor, if there's any questions on this exhibit, be happy to answer those.
Does anybody have any questions on this?
Sean, this is there. I'm so sorry, but could you, I think you cut out when you talked about the fire truck loan. Could you, can you cover that again, just briefly?
Sure, no, thanks for letting me know, Sarah. The fire truck loan, as it's shown here, is repaid over a 20-year term, which is the maximum term that it can be repaid over. We, meaning Sarah and I, as we put this together, did want to get some feedback from the council, given the history in the city has been to pay back fire equipment, I believe, on a shorter term, maybe 10, 10 years in the past. So this represents the total term that, the maximum term that it could be repaid over. But certainly, if the council likes, we can adjust this repayment schedule to shorten that up. But we wanted to get your feedback, the council's feedback.
Mr. Mayor, if you may.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, if I could. Mr. Mayor, can I go ahead?
Sorry, Ed, sorry. I have problems on this end.
So if I could ask Sean just a couple of questions. So Sean, we are blending amortizations, then? I didn't think we, we could do that, but that's what you're showing here, correct?
Yes, Scott, we can. The, the ability to blend different issues into a single issue, that's what the corporate purpose bond provision allows us to do. So yes, we are doing that.
Okay. And so, so if we wanted, I guess I'll start the conversation on the fire truck, and we'll see what the others feel. Our previous fire truck, our current fire truck, has got 31 years of life in it. I'd be, having said that, I'd be more comfortable looking at something no later than 15 years to, to, on that fire truck in this scenario. So pull it back from 20 to 15. The other question, I guess I've got, and it may be for staff, and I'm not sure if the City Attorney will let me wander over there or not, but in the replacement schedule, when is the next fire truck due? I want to make sure this one is retired before we go into the CIP budget and, and have a, have another fire truck come rolling on, so to speak.
Mr. Morris said, I think we'd have to, I can look at that. See if I can pull that up briefly.
I apologize, I'm springing this on you because I had a different plan. I had a different plan originally. I didn't know, I didn't realize we could, we could, we could blend these amortizations. So I'm comfortable with this, with the exception of the fire truck. I'd like to see that pulled back to 15.
Hey, hey, Sarah, just a quick question. Why, why if we, normally, like Sean said, it's either 10 or 15 years for fire trucks, why did we decide to go 20 years this time?
Mr. Mayor, this, this was, I'm going to just claim ignorance a little bit on my part, so the way that I think about amortization is I would match it to the life of the truck. And like Councilmember Morissette pointed out, the old truck is 31 years. So in my opinion, it felt that 20 years felt like an okay timeframe to spread the debt over, thinking that the truck would have a longer life than that. However, looking back and looking at, we borrowed for a fire truck in 2015, and we did that on a 10-year term. So certainly, he's correct in that the city has a history of doing it over a shorter period of time, and I'm certainly comfortable doing that over a shorter period of time as well, if that's council's, if you prefer to do that from a council standpoint.
Thanks.
Of course.
Mr. Mayor, if I may comment?
Yeah, please, Diane.
I, I appreciate that we usually pay off our fire trucks within about 10 years. But however, given the, the reports that Sarah, as Finance Director, is going to give to us later, I think maybe be a little more liquid and stretching this out may make sense at this point. I assume that it is something that we can pay off more quickly if, in the future, we decide to do so.
Yeah, I like how you pin that. I mean, that's a better shot out of YouTube.
Mr. Mayor, this is Sean Lentz. Maybe just quickly to that point, on a 20-year issue like this, the payments due in 2021 through 2028 would be non-prepayable?
Yep.
But starting, I believe it would be March 1st of 2020, 28, and any date thereafter, at the discretion of the city council, you would have the ability to make prepayments.
Okay, thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Plunkett here, I do have a question as well.
Yeah.
As we're looking at the interest column there, just my rough math on here, at least for the first couple of years, it looks like we're paying more than the rate listed there. At, for a 6.25 billion issue at 1.35%, we should be at around $84,000, $85,000, not 134,000. What am I missing on how we're calculating that?
Sure, yeah, no problem. So the way, the way bonds sold in this fashion work is each of the maturities has a separate interest rate attached to it. So I'll try to do this in an example for you.
Got it, no, I can see that, then.
Yep, so you, you take the final maturity that has that rate, each maturity has its rate, and you sum up all of those for the payment here, and that's how you, the 134 is representative of all of those.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Mayor, I have a partial answer for Mr. Morissette. So what's available quickly for me is the 2019 through 2023 capital plan that's approved. That includes the same years for our detailed vehicle replacement plan. Fortunately, I don't have the next, we, we do have every vehicle actually scheduled, but I don't have that one handy for tonight's meeting. The, the next scheduled vehicle is a 2002 Ford brush truck, and that is a 2023 planned replacement of $70,000. But we, I would say, in a very anecdotal, but I think fairly supported way, this, this particular purchase is one of the larger and last of the more recent, pretty significant investments in the, in the fire equipment. So, and this is, this is intended to be one of the kind of primary workhorses of the department and many of the other vehicles. But with the exception, I'd say, at this point, of the ladder truck, we are much lesser importance, and so we'll have some more flexibility in the future about delaying and not purchasing or replacing some of those vehicles at the, anytime soon. This is the second of those two big main engines, so. I don't know if that answers your question, but we can certainly get you a copy of the, the plan. But there, there will be additional major expenses within the 20-year period of this bond for the fire equipment, likely. So it's, that's, and that is, in fact, why we've had a very conservative, some would say aggressive, bond amortization matching schedules in the past with fire equipment, because we've looked at it more like, let's get it paid for, and then it's a future investment for, for future generations, it's already paid for. But in this case, I think the liquidity, my recommendation is consistent with, with Sarah and Sean's, that the liquidity right now in the low rates makes some sense for us to go ahead and lock it up, and, and we've got some ability eight years down the road to kind of look at delay of land at that point.
Okay, is that, Mr. Morissette, does that answer your question somewhat?
Stuck on mute here. Yeah, thank you, Scott. I didn't mean to, I don't like springing stuff like that on staff. Thanks for pulling into that. I understand the brush truck, I'm fine with that, that, I mean, I don't want to downplay the brush truck, but that's not as significant as, as you mentioned, the two, the two bigger, the two bigger engines that are going out. And I am more comfortable now than I was before, given the fact that the amortization essentially will fall off, some of that other amortization will fall off sooner in that state fund, so in the, in the whole scheme of things. I still would like to see us at 15 years. I think, I think 15 years is a give past the 10 that we normally do. I just think that 20 is too long of an amortization. I appreciate today's issues of liquidity and, and the things that are facing us right now, but I, I think ultimately, we're gonna, we're gonna come out of this, and we're gonna be, we're gonna be just fine long-term with it. So I still do feel strongly that we should pull it back to 15.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments on this resolution?
Mayor, maybe I can move through the last couple exhibits, that they'll go quicker, if that's okay with you?
Yeah, go ahead, Sean.
And, and just one last thing on exhibit one. Mr. Morissette had requested potentially a 15-year, just for the council's knowledge in terms of the amount of that payment, is you look at that fire truck column right now, it's about, it's in the low $40,000 a year. If we were to shorten it up to a 15-year repayment instead of a 20-year payment, the annual payment, I'd annual payment I'd estimate to be about $53,000-54,000 a year. So, that would be the difference. You'd pay more each year, but you would pay less total interest by paying it faster.
Okay.
Okay. I'll go through the last couple exhibits then. Sarah, if you could go to Exhibit 2. This exhibit is just to inform the council of where we would be from the standpoint of general obligation borrowing capacity following the issuance of the proposed 2020 bonds. The blue bars represent the city's outstanding indebtedness, including this issue. The red line represents the state limit. This doesn't show any new debt being issued, and it also doesn't show the city growing at all. The red line is predicated on the equalized value of the city, and this just assumes it stays at the same level. So, at this point with this issue, you would have used up about, I think it's 47% of the borrowing capacity, and we would still have 53% remaining. So, you're in a very, very strong position there, even following a large issue like this. Sarah, could we go to Exhibit 3? Exhibit 3 is the impact of this issue when it's added to the total indebtedness of the city. So, with this issue being added on the exhibit in 2020, that's the blue column on the far left, for 2021, we do expect an uptick in the total principal and interest that will have to be in the general fund budget for 2021. Then it comes down a little bit thereafter for the next couple of years, about the same level that you're at now. And then over time from there, you see the annual debt payments with this proposed new issue and the rest of the city's existing debt are falling off over time. That's by design to afford some capacity when the city has other additional capital projects come up that have to be funded by the debt levy. So, there is, this isn't a situation, I'm happy to note, where by doing this financing, the total payments on all the city's debt over the next 20 years are going to be exactly the same. This is more to show to the council that your levy is expected to go up a titch next year, be at about the same levy, level for debt without anything new being added. But over time, as we get out three, five, seven years, you can see in 10 years that the existing debt, including this issue, are falling off over time to supply some capacity there in the future. Finally, Exhibit 4. Sarah, thank you very much. Great. As I mentioned before, the city issued in 2017 a loan to finance infrastructure in Tax Increment District Number 10, the Sterling Ponds Business Park. The current payments are a little bit over $101,000 a year, principal and interest. By combining this issue, the refunding of that issue with the total issue, what you see in the green section on Exhibit 4 is the portion of the proposed new issue that's allocated to pay off the 2017 loan. And then as you look at the, look at the savings estimate based on the interest rates that we talked about for our planning purposes, in that blue rectangle, we're projecting to reduce the interest debt service cost by about a little bit over $77,000 in total. So, with those, that level of savings, also, we don't anticipate on this particular loan prepaying it in the short run, the need to prepay it in the short run. So, it makes sense to get the savings, lower the annual debt service cost by including this refinancing, in our opinion. And finally, just real briefly, Sarah, if you could go back to the schedule, I want to just mention to the council the steps. Great, thanks again, Sarah. Tonight, we wanted to introduce the plan and get any feedback and answer questions. Throughout the month of May, city staff and I would be working on preparing the offering document for the 2020 bonds called the official statement. We will also be working to update the city's bond rating, which I, again, I had mentioned is a very strong AA2 rating currently. All of this would lead up to a sale the morning of June 9th. The evening of June 9th will bring those results to you for review, and at that point, you'll have the best bid in front of you and can make a decision to accept that bid if it meets the expectations of the council. The issue would then close a couple of weeks after that toward the end of June, and the funds will be available for both the fire truck, the police station, the refinancing of the interim note of the police station, and then the state trust fund loan we expect to be paid off by the middle of July. So, I know we covered a lot of material, and thanks for the questions earlier, but at this point, Mr. Mayor, I turn it back to you and be happy to answer any questions from yourself or the council. Does anybody have questions for Sean on any of these?
Mr. Mayor, this is Hal. I have a question for Ms. Sarah Carlson, if she could go back to item number, Exhibit We were looking at our borrowing capacity essentially against the state limit, and I know that a number of years ago, I want to say four or maybe five years ago, we passed a set of resolutions that limited our own, basically put some parameters around how much debt that we're willing to take on. And I was wondering whether Ms. Carlson had kind of looked at any of those limits in relation to this obligation and our overall kind of debt, debt limit. Do any of the other council members know, remember what I'm talking about?
I don't.
I do.
I do.
This is Scott.
Of course.
So, while Sarah's thinking about that, so we have both a fiscal plan that includes some guidelines for our debt or some targets, I guess are better, is better word to use for the fiscal plan. We do have a debt management policy that's been adopted by the council. I believe that was 2016. And so, that talks about kind of how we're going to do debt, what's included for, what kind of things we might, we might borrow for, and then guidelines and trying to find in the document, debt service to total levy, debt service levy to total levy has a goal, so not a maximum, minimum, whatever, that's 20%. Now, that, that is actually more related to, I think, chart, let's see, GO outstanding. There's a levy next to that. Yeah, that one, that's more related to the percent. And then debt service, the goal of debt service along Mr. Morissette's statement, the goal of general obligation debt is 10 years, but it does indicate we can do additional. Let me see if we've got a number here, Mr. Watson.
I think the answer to that question is yes, we're aware of it and reviewed it. I'm not sure what level of review Sarah did regarding it, but I'm looking at most of our limitations as far as proceeds, sizes, sets of min-max, we're within that. There's some guidance here for how much of the bond proceeds will be spent down over time. That's one that actually would be good for Mr. Lentz, and Ms. Carlson can take a look at that and see. But I think it looks to me like that's well within. We don't have any arbitrage issues here that I'm aware of. So, I'm going through, I mean, it's 12-page policy I'm trying to find.
Right. No, I appreciate that.
This is Sarah, and I really appreciate the question in terms of what I've looked at. I have focused on legal limits and making sure that we were within all the statutory requirements. But in terms of just ensuring, and I do believe we're in compliance of all of the various ordinances that we've issued in terms of debt, but I will do another set of looking at that and circle back with council, just to give you accurate numbers and show you exactly how that relates to the policy that you were choosing.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think that's a very good thing to bring up, council member.
Absolutely.
And just for those interested in the public, this is just GO debt that's on this. This doesn't include any revenue bonds. Is that correct?
Yes, that is. The electric sewer and water debt are not included on Exhibit 2, 3, 2 or 3.
And Sean, does that, does that, does that cap in, I think it was Exhibit 2 or 1? Does that cap at $53 million? Is that, do we have to be under that for revenue bonds, too? The combination of revenue and GO?
No, the limit that is reflected by the red line on Exhibit 2 is a limit only for general obligation debt.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Sean, this is Alderman Gagne. Can you give us just a brief, I mean, real, real kind of brief info as far as our credit rating? You said it was a AA2. What's the top and what's the bottom? I mean, as far as credit ratings for municipal government?
Yes, happy to do it. The, the top rating is the AAA. The rating agency that the city works with is Moody's Investor Service. The, the next rating after the AAA is a AA1, and then the city's at the AA2. And I believe I've mentioned this to the council in the past and staff as well, most of the things, if not everything, that you have direct control over, so your budgeting, your financial management, your, your commitment to putting together plans and managing to those plans and policies, all those things you have control over and all those things you're doing very, very well. There are things that the rating is based on that are out of your hands, and a lot of those things are items like your size, the wealth indices of the community. Those factors are taken into account by the rating agency, and they're not things that a city council can really do a whole lot about. So, those are, end up being limiting factors to have a community be able to get to that very best and top-level rating of a AAA, which very, very few do. So, big picture for River Falls, you're doing an excellent job. Your rating is very, very high for a community your size, and I think the work that you do on financial planning and policies and your strong fund balance are a reason why. So, I expect we'll, we'll still be at that AA2 level. We'd like to get it up at some point to the next AA1, but it is a tough leap because of a lot of factors that are out of your control.
Thanks for that, Sean.
Anybody else have anything for Sean? Okay, so, let's go back to our original resolution. This is the one authorizing the general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $3,85,000 for the police facility. I have a first, second. We've asked her questions or comments, so I will call on everybody to vote on this. We'll start with Sean. Chris?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Hal?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay. So, let's go on to the next one. It's another initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $665,000 for the fire engine. And I will take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution not to exceed $665,000 for the fire truck.
Second. Questions or comments from anyone?
So, would this be where I would make a motion to move it to a 15-year am, or should I wait until we get down to number 10?
I think, I think this would be.
Correct.
Chris?
Yeah, correct. You would move to amend since there's a motion on the table.
Okay, then I move to amend the amortization for this obligation from 20 years to 15 years.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Got first and second. Any questions or comments on the amendment?
I have, Alderman Gagne, Mr. Mayor. So, Sarah, what does this do to the interest that we would be saving? Is there a significant difference in the savings from going from 15 to 20?
There is some interest savings over those five years. I'd have to do the math, and I could certainly provide that back to you, what the difference would be. We'd pay a little more upfront, so I think Sean mentioned it'd be $53,000 as opposed to the 40, so we'd pay a little more off the principal and then the difference. So, there would be some interest savings, yes.
Sarah, this is Sean. I might be able to ballpark that for you. Do you have Exhibit Number 1 that you could call up again?
Yes, just give me one minute.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Why Sarah's doing that, if I could just add another comment, I think in the bigger scheme of things, to Mr. Gagne's point, how much more are we going to pay, what are we going to save? Because this is going into one, one debt obligation, we also need to include the savings that we're going to give from that state, that state revenue bond that we took, which was $3,000 or $4,000 a year as well. So, that enters into it as well. So, it would net, I mean, if it's $15,000, it would net something more like 11 would be the increase. Would that be a fair statement, Sean?
You're, overall in payments, Scott, I would agree with you. The only caveat to this situation is the refunding is paid by TIN-10, and the fire, fire truck and the police station is paid by the levy. So, you're right on a macro level, but it is coming from different funding sources.
Okay, thanks for pointing that out. I didn't realize that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. I'm sorry about that again. And so, if we look at the, we look at the column for fire truck on the bottom there, I can't quite see that, is that $823,000 there?
$823,579.
Okay, so that's a 20-year amortization. I did a quick check. If we did 15 years at approximately $53,000, that's $795,000 in total debt service. And so if we look at the, we look at the column for fire truck on the bottom there, I can't quite see that, is that $823,000 there?
$823,579.
Okay, so that's a 20-year amortization. I did a, a quick check. If we did 15 years at approximately $53,000, that's $795,000 in total debt service. So the 795 compared up with the, the 823 is, is about $28,000 less in interest costs over the life of the issue by, by shorting, shorting it five years. Okay, so does anybody else have any questions for, on this one? So let's, so I got first and second on the amendment. Let's vote on the amendment first. So we'll start with Sean.
Aye.
I'm, I'm sorry, make this clear, you remember this, take it from 20 years to 15 years for, for funding the fire truck, sorry.
Yep, I'm in favor of the amendment, aye.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Chris?
I'm in favor of the amendment, aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Hal?
Aye.
Okay, then let's go back to the original resolution, which I have a first and a second on.
Can I ask you an additional question there, Mayor, again?
Oh, yeah.
My head is, is a little bit rusty on applying the rule of 72 and interest rate calculations in my head, but I came up with approximately $200,000 that, oh, no, I figured it out, never mind. Got my, got my error, thanks.
Okay, okay, so we'll vote on the original amendment, or the, the original resolution. So we'll start with Hal.
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now we're going to move on to the next resolution authorizing $2.5 million general obligation refunding bonds. This, this would, let's see, this resolution authorized issuance of debt for paying costs to refund principal and interest obligations of the city for both the initial purchase of the police building and 2017 A State Fund Trust loan.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution for the $2.5 million general obligation refunding bonds.
Second.
Okay, questions or comments?
I think we've asked them all already.
Yeah, okay, so we'll go and vote on this one. We'll start with Sean.
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Hal?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, now we're going to move on to the next resolution authorizing $2.5 million general obligation refunding bonds. This, this would, let's see, this resolution authorized issuance of debt for paying costs to refund principal and interest obligations of the city for both the initial purchase of the police building and 2017 A State Fund Trust loan.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution for the $2.5 million general obligation refunding bonds.
Second.
Okay, questions or comments?
I think we've asked them all already.
Yeah, okay, so we'll go and vote on this one. We'll start with Sean.
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Hal?
Aye.
Okay, so next resolution is directing publication of notice to electors relating to the bond issuance. So this would just direct us to publicize this.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
I move to approve the item number 10.
10.
Resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issue.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, we'll vote on this one. I'll start with Sean.
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Hal?
Aye.
Okay, then let's go back to the original resolution, which I have a first and a second on.
Can I ask you an additional question there, Mayor, again?
Oh, yeah.
My head is, is a little bit rusty on applying the rule of 72 and interest rate calculations in my head, but I came up with approximately $200,000 that, oh, no, I figured it out, never mind. Got my, got my error, thanks.
Okay, okay, so we'll vote on the original amendment, or the, the original resolution. So we'll start with Hal.
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now we're going to move on to the next resolution authorizing $2.5 million general obligation refunding bonds. This, this would, let's see, this resolution authorized issuance of debt for paying costs to refund principal and interest obligations of the city for both the initial purchase of the police building and 2017 A State Fund Trust loan.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution for the $2.5 million general obligation refunding bonds.
Second.
Okay, questions or comments?
I think we've asked them all already.
Yeah, okay, so we'll go and vote on this one. We'll start with Sean.
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now we're going to move on to the next resolution authorizing $2.5 million general obligation refunding bonds. This, this would, let's see, this resolution authorized issuance of debt for paying costs to refund principal and interest obligations of the city for both the initial purchase of the police building and 2017 A State Fund Trust loan.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution for the $2.5 million general obligation refunding bonds.
Second.
Okay, questions or comments?
I think we've asked them all already.
Yeah, okay, so we'll go and vote on this one. We'll start with Sean.
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Hal?
Aye.
Okay, so next resolution is directing publication of notice to electors relating to the bond issuance. So this would just direct us to publicize this.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
I move to approve the item number 10.
10.
Resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issue.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, we'll vote on this one. I'll start with Sean.
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
And Hal?
Aye.
Okay. Oops, sorry about that. The last resolution is provides for the sale of $6,250,000 worth of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 20A.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution providing for the sale of $6.25 million in general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2020A.
Second.
Questions, any more questions or comments? Okay, can you vote on this then? Start with Hal.
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And Sean?
Aye.
Okay, next move on to report. The first thing we're going to talk about is our finance director, Sarah Carlson, will give us an update on the COVID-19 fiscal impact on the city. Take it away, Sarah.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to share my screen here. All right, so, evening, Mayor and council. I'm going to walk you through the initial estimate of the fiscal impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on the city financials, and I'm happy to take questions at the end, or if you want to go with questions as we move along, that's just fine as well. So this first slide here talks about the national projected fiscal impact of COVID-19, and it's a, it's a widely debated topic. No one has a crystal ball, and there's a lot of uncertainty around this. So I like this chart because it shows a variety of different outcomes depending on the virus spread and the economic policy response. From everything that I've been reading, I think that we're likely to be in a U-shaped curve. So if you look at this graph somewhere in the A3 neighborhood, where 2020 will be bearing the brunt of, of the impact, and then we'll begin to see some recovery in 2021. Because of the excellent stewardship of city council, the city is in, in very good financial health. I, I think you've heard this before, but our, our goal of a 50% of undesignated general fund balance is not very common across the state, and it allows us to weather the storm well and also make deliberate and thoughtful decisions. So as of 12/31, we had 54% of our undesignated fund balance in the general fund. We also had 90 days of cash on hand for all of our utility funds, and we've talked about our borrowing capacity. We have additional borrowing capacity as well, should we need to borrow additional funds. Now, this, these numbers in here does not include that issuance that you just approved. These numbers will need to be updated to reflect that. But all in all, the city is positioned really well. So the next couple of slides will break down the impact for general government as well as our utility funds. So I'll start here with the general government revenue impact. So the general government revenue decline is forecasted to be somewhere between $700,000 to $300,000, depending on the length of the safe-at-home order, as well as the subsequent phases of our bounce-back program. Now, the impact of the federal and state revenue is undetermined at this time, so I have not included any estimates relating to that, but just for your knowledge, the city is still expecting $2.3 million in property tax revenue and an additional $1.9 million in state shared revenue yet in 2020. But these numbers above are not reflective of those. So what I'm looking at here are more locally sourced revenue that are being impacted, and so decreases that staff is expecting is, and of course, this is subject to council approval, but no implementation of the streetlight utility in 2020, that's roughly $75,000. Depending on what happens with our parking wreck programs this summer, we have a total of $100,000 of revenue associated with those programs, parking violations and court fees, building permits. I believe that Amy's team is still seeing that, we're still seeing an uptick in building permits, but we're forecasting that to come down, to be determined if that will actually happen. Room tax revenue, and then revolving loan fund repayments and some of our borrowers being unable to make those repayments. Staff has been working really hard on trying to identify cost reductions to offset the expected revenue decrease. So as of today, we have initiatives that I believe will yield around $600,000 of cost reductions, and they include a hiring freeze across the city excluding EMS, cutting room maintenance costs, reevaluating and halting some of our capital projects, and also restricting our spending in advertising, printing, professional services, training, travel, and meals and supplies. Obviously, all of these initiatives will be presented to council and will be subject to your approval as well. The utility funds are also expected to be impacted negatively by COVID, and that's primarily because of the shutdown of all the in-person activities and the large utility customers, so UWRF, the school district, and CVTC. So in addition to that, legislation has been issued that prohibits us from charging late fees and disconnection fees. So breaking it down with the three major utilities, so for the electric utility, the reduction in KWH usage from UWRF, from the school district and CVTC, we forecast will yield a decline of $350,000 in revenue. Additional declines in revenue related to late payments and disconnection fees, $75,000. From sewer utility, same reduction in usage for UWRF, for the school district and CVTC, that will be offset by some increase in residential usage, but the net is still a decline of roughly $130,000. And then the water utility, we have, we're seeing the same reduction in usage, which will yield about $17,000 of a reduced revenue there. Same, same thing here. Staff has been working really hard on trying to identify cost reductions. So for the utility, that includes a hiring freeze, redirecting temporarily, efforts around powerful choices and green teams for 2020, reevaluating and halting capital projects, some capital projects, and then restricting spending on advertising, printing, professional services, supplies, travel, training, and meals. So what does the path forward look like? Well, I want to just pause for a second and just emphasize how grateful I am to be working for a mayor and a city council and staff that are going above and beyond to provide public services, also being extremely fiscally responsible. So I think we're in a really good position to deal with whatever comes ahead. I like this chart, too. It doesn't have a timeline on it, which is probably a problem, I'm looking for a time, an actual timeline, but I think we're somewhere here in the resilience phase where we're focused on near-term cash management, which is why we were talking about debt issuance. Want to preserve cash, take advantage of some low interest rates, and continue to practice fiscal conservatism until we see more how the summer will unfold. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have. I'm also happy to walk through the appendix if you'd like that shows the various scenarios that I referenced earlier. Sarah, I think for the McKinsey and Company report, I don't know that they, I remember reading through this report, but I don't remember if they specifically addressed in their micro model and then rolled it into this macro model. But I think the short answer, Councilmember Plunkett, is that there probably is some level of health GEP impacts within this, but this is a pretty macro view of life here and I don't know that that was included.
I think Councilmember Plunkett, I think that's exactly right. I don't believe that that was in here in terms of, I think perhaps it was guiding some of the inputs, but I don't believe that that was part of it at all. When I read the study, that does not stand out to me as something that they talked about. I think it highlights your point, which is the point I was probably not making well enough, is that there's so much uncertainty around this in terms of what the economic fallout is really going to be, that it's really difficult at this time to talk about what it's really going to look like from a long-term perspective.
Anybody else have anything for Sarah? Thanks, Sarah. Nice job.
Thank you.
Okay, next we want to, Administrator's report. Scott get anything for us or anybody's got any questions for Scott?
I have a few updates, but if there's questions, I'd be happy to take those first. Doesn't mean you can't answer questions. Ask questions after, but you know, first of all, I want to congratulate the mayor and the city council for being adaptable. I'm fortunate to see every day the adaptability of city staff and that's something that I'm not surprised by. They continue to match our expectations or exceed them and we kind of meet the test every day. But I think you should also take a moment to appreciate that a group of eight souls, so to speak, can get together and work their way through this. In particular, I thought the last meeting, you did an excellent job of being patient and working through the technology. And I don't know that the public understands that you're, each meeting, you're dealing with a different set of technologies, different locations, different circumstances, and you've been able to meet it. And we'll be doing that again with the next meeting, trying out some other formats to see how we can improve the citizen engagement portion of this. I've been watching, got several screens up here, watching the YouTube feed and the feed that we're seeing. And so there's certainly some bumps in the road that we can work out. But I think you did some very, very heavy lifting this evening and I think you did it in a admirable way, so I appreciate that. I do also want to tell you that I appreciate the community, the conversations that I've had with different members of the community, emails, correspondence and others. Certainly, there's a deep and powerful concern about the overall well-being of people in the community. And I think you can see that, that's kind of evident in everybody's daily life as they're going about doing it. There's certainly some very, very disappointing and sad moments as a city administrator these days to be in the community and see playgrounds with caution tape on them and other things that just, it's frankly a little heartbreaking from the public administration standpoint. But there's also a lot of positive things that we're seeing. Certainly, people are getting to take advantage of the things we talked about when we did the strategic planning, that there really is some natural beauty and some particular uniqueness to this community, both, you know, from a geography and ecology. And so now, it's really impressive to see people literally beating down the paths throughout the community. So, you know, this isn't meant to be an inspirational speech necessarily. There's probably other people better at doing that, but we'll take the good and the bad. You can understand that the city staff is going to be here to support the community and that's, we feel a strong sense of responsibility to do that. And not in a mothering or fathering way, but standing side by side and supporting the community as we go forward with this, including reading all kinds of reports and things we can get our hands on to try to understand and get some futuristic look of what may be coming down the pike. Certainly, council members, if you come across good articles or things that you're particularly interested in us as staff, understanding your perspective or other people's perspective, we'd be happy to do that. And we will be rolling out some specific planning for the city of River Falls. We are hopeful at this time that we may be able to do that in a coordinated effort with both the Pearson-Sinkra County and also potentially with some of our other municipal neighbors in order to give the area some consistency in how we were going to move forward. I caution the community that, and I know that we've been asked in some cases to do that, certainly as a city administrator and the police chief and others that are in the service of the community, we do not believe we have the authority to defy the order of the governor of the state of Wisconsin. To the extent that the courts make determinations or interpretations that that power has been misused or somehow not correctly used, then we certainly will take that into consideration as we go forward with our implementation plans. But I just do want to reiterate that our job here is to serve under the structure of the law that we have and certainly as community members. I don't think we'd want individual professional staff members of the city making other decisions outside law that we just feel is best and implement it. We're certainly always cognizant of the constitutional and statutory limitations of our roles and we lean on the mayor and the council to help provide us some guidance there. So the plans we'll be going forward, we're happy to see the mayor a lot these days. So the mayor has been, I don't know if he considers it promoted or relegated to full-time status. As a part-time ordinance mayor, he definitely is, his dollar per hour is going down rapidly in compensation these days. So appreciate that. I'm glad that we can connect. And I really want to emphasize with the community that we hope that you reach out, continue to call us, email us and contact us. We are here to support you. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody have anything for Scott? Okay, let's move on to the cop patrol report. Diane.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the cop patrol's report for March 2020. General revenue, fund revenues through the end of March were $3,478,539, or 32% of total budget revenues for the year. Revenues in March included $121,114 from the School Resource Officer Program, as well as delinquent personal property tax collections of $46,085. Year-to-date expenditures through the end of March were $2,237,747, or 21% of total budget expenditures for the year. Year-to-date revenues in excess of expenditures are $1,247,92.
Thanks, Diane. Okay, I just have a couple announcements. We have like four proclamations we have to read tonight, so I enlisted some of the council members to read them. It looks like the first one we have to read is the police appreciation one. And I think Mr. Brewstedt will be reading that for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the police officers of River Falls have worked devotedly and unselfishly on behalf of the people of this community, regardless of peril or hazard to themselves, these officers have safeguarded the lives and property of all in River Falls. And by their service and their dedicated efforts, these men and women have earned the gratitude of the city of River Falls. And whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy was authorized by Congress to proclaim May 15th of each year as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of all peace officers who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty. And whereas the presidential proclamation also designated that each year, the calendar week in which May 15th occurs or proceeds shall be proclaimed as Police Appreciation Week, in recognition of the service given by the men and women who day and night stand guard in our communities and proclaim May 15th, 2020, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. Now, therefore, I, Dan Tolan, Mayor of the City of River Falls, do hereby proclaim the week of May 10th through the 16th, 2020, as Police Appreciation Week in the City of River Falls, and encourage all citizens to observe the week with law enforcement officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and proclaim May 15th, 2020, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Given under my hand and seal of the City of River Falls this 20th day of April, 2020, Mayor Dan Tolan.
Thanks, Todd. Next, we have Mr. Marsettle. Read the municipal clerks' week one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is quite an honor because of the steps that the clerks have had to go through for the April 7th election and the upcoming May 12th election. So this is quite timely. So I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world as the oldest profession among public servants and provides the professional connections between the citizens, the governing bodies, the agencies and the local county and state levels. And whereas the duties of the municipal clerk are many, including serving as the official record keeper for municipalities, issuing licenses and permits, facilitating the annual board of review and municipal redistricting projects, including meetings and serving as a community resource. And whereas the 1,854 municipal clerks and 72 county clerks contribute to election administration by attending required training and dedicating themselves to providing fair, non-biased and nonpartisan, accurate and responsible elections in Wisconsin. And now, therefore, Mayor Dan Tolan does hereby recognize the week of May 3 through 9 to 2020 as Municipal Clerks Week and further extends appreciation to our staff for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent, given under his hand and the seal of the City of River Falls on this 20th day of April, 2020.
Thanks, Scott. And then Diane will read the next one, which is National Public Works Week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings and solid waste collection. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. Now, therefore, Mayor Dan Tolan of the City of River Falls does proclaim the week of May 17th through 23rd, 2020, as National Public Weeks Week, and calls upon the people of River Falls to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contribution which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort and quality of life. Given under his hand and seal of the City of River Falls this 20th day of April, 2020.
Thanks, Diane. And the last one is for Arbor, I can say it wrong. Arbor Day, Arbor Day 2020 proclamation. I got it too. And Hannah will read this one for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas trees are a vital resource in the City of River Falls across Wisconsin, the nation and the world, and whereas trees help conserve soil and energy, filter out, filter our air and intercept stormwater runoff from entering our waterways, create jobs through a large forest products industry, provide wildlife habitat and make our homes, cities and countryside more livable and beautiful. And whereas human activities, along with acts of nature, threaten our trees, creating the need for concerted action to ensure the future of our rural and urban forests. And whereas each year in late April, Arbor Day is celebrated as people across the country pay special attention to the wonderful treasure our trees represent and dedicate themselves to the continued health of our forests. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Dan Tolan, Mayor of the City of River Falls, do proclaim, hereby proclaim, April 30, 2020, to be Arbor Day in the City of River Falls, Wisconsin. Be it further resolved that I urge all citizens to become more aware of the importance of trees to their well-being and to participate in tree planting programs that will ensure a healthy and green city and an inheritance for future generations of River Falls. Given under my hand and seal of the City of River Falls this 20th day of April, 2020, Mayor Dan Tolan.
Thanks, Hannah. Okay. Todd?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Great job.